Public hearing for Hammond City Council on September 3rd, 2013. For roll call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Yeah.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, our side on the agenda. Number one, ordinance to amend the city code of ordinance, chapter five, article one, section 5.2, to provide exceptions to Sunday openings for retail establishments selling alcohol. Okay, we've got a packed house. What we'll do is, is we will, we'll take terms, we'll do several people against and for. I'll let you know whenever we, if we're running a little bit over, but I'll certainly give everybody ample opportunity to speak. So what we'll do is, is if you are here to speak against this item, I'll take the first person up to the podium. When you come up, please give us your name and address for the record, please, we need that for our record. So do we have somebody? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Peters, we're going to explain what this new ordinance consists of.
Sure.
Thank you. Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive.
Okay, this, Ms. Louise, the way I understand it, and Andre, correct me if I'm getting wrong, this would allow for retail establishments to sell alcohol that is over 5% in volume or-
Alcohol content.
Alcohol content on Sunday. That is permitted at this time. Only anything like beer, under 5% alcohol content, is allowed to be sold on Sundays. So that's, that's what this is for, to change that where it is allowable to be sold, to go into the grocery store, pick up wine or whatever, and walk out.
Including bars and liquor shops.
Retail establishments.
Actually, councilman, it's supermarkets, drugstores, and grocery stores would be allowed to sell those items on Sunday. Grocery stores, supermarkets, and drugstores.
Okay, so Ms. Louise was kind of just asking for information, so again, I'll open it up to if somebody has, would like to speak against this item, now would be the time to do so. Okay, do we have somebody that would like to speak in favor of this item?
Hi.
Good afternoon.
My name is Jessica Elliott with Louisiana Retailers Association, 4919 Jamestown Avenue, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. We sent the original letter to you asking the council to look at the ordinance and consider allowing grocery stores to sell alcohol with a high alcohol volume content on Sundays. They currently are allowed to sell beer on Sundays, just not wine and liquor. This was in response to several of our members that operate in the Hammond City Limits that asked us to bring this to the council today, and several of those retailers are here today to speak in support and answer any of your questions.
Any questions from the council? I want to turn it over to the residents, if you have anybody else.
I just want to make one, ask you to comment on one thing, these retail stores or supermarkets are allowed to sell beer, but not beer that has a higher alcohol content than 5%, is that correct? So we're currently selling beer on Sundays, we're just not selling pretty much imported beers.
Heineken's.
A Heineken's is an example of Heineken's, but you can actually sell beer on Sunday now.
You can't sell beer on Sundays in the city limits of Hammond, currently.
Jessica, do you know the law and the parish?
Intended to poeh parish, the law was changed, I think it was three years ago, to allow all sales on Sunday, including liquor and wine and beer.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, I'll open the floor back up. Is there anybody that would like to speak against this item? Somebody else wants to speak in favor of this item?
Good evening. Randy LeBlanc, 18229 Green Lakes Court, Baton Rouge. I'm one of the co-owners of LeBlanc's Food Stores here in Hammond. And one of the main reasons that we approached the LRA about bringing this issue to the council is the fact that there's a number of sales that are leaving the city, obviously going elsewhere, affecting both the tax base, but more importantly, we're losing the opportunity to sell other products, because a lot of consumers will go elsewhere to purchase their alcoholic desires, and in doing so, will take that opportunity to spend those dollars on grocery, meat, produce, et cetera, while they are at an establishment outside of the city. So one of the main points we have is that we're losing an opportunity to sell those additional products as well, and we just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Okay, anybody come in that would like to speak against this item? Anybody else would like to speak in favor of this item?
My name is Dan Lambert, 116 North Kate Street in Hammond downtown, and I own a bar downtown. And the reason I'm here is simply to, to ask that maybe the council consider the way the Baton Rouge City Council has just gone and decided to open up liquor sales for everyone on Sunday. The same reasons I would like to have it are the same reasons Mr. LeBlanc just mentioned, increased sales. I mean, I'm missing out on a good $50,000 here in sales, and the city's missing out on that tax revenue. As it is right now, I can walk into any restaurant in this town on a Sunday and go to sit at the bar and order a drink and drink all afternoon and watch the football games and leave. Well, they serve the same liquor that I serve, they buy from the same people that I buy from. So if, if the council could explain to me why it's okay to drink in that restaurant, and now maybe okay to buy the stuff at these retail outlets, why is it not okay in a licensed legal business at a bar?
Mrs. Lambert, that is not the issue that we have, that we're dealing with today. If you would like to meet with the council and come back with that item, but that is not what is on the table today. So we're going to stay focused on what we're dealing with today, which is for retail establishments. If you want to speak to the council at another time, but-
Well, sir, I thought-
That's not what, that's not what the item is on today, so there's no, there's no, there's no answer to give you today, because we haven't, we haven't dealt with that.
I thought we were speaking to this ordinance that does, has specific language about bars in it, that's why I thought-
No, sir. This, this ordinance issue, no, doesn't affect-
Doesn't say anything about the bars?
No, it only, it only applies to grocery stores, supermarkets, and drugstores.
So we're just changing part of the ordinance, not the entire ordinance?
That's right, just, just-
So we can only talk about that part of the ordinance, not the entire ordinance?
Well, that's the only issue on the-
Just, just asking, so we can't talk about that ordinance?
That's the only item on the agenda today.
So we're not talking about the whole ordinance, just a piece of?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, come on up.
Kevin Burdell, 425 Brani and Luke. I think what I'm going to say is probably a little bit redundant of what, what everybody has said up to this point, but I guess if we've come this far, I might as well make whatever, whatever point it is I have to make, and then somebody else can speak. I'd like to thank the city council for giving me the opportunity to speak today on behalf of the Hammond Albertsons. Today in Hammond, restaurants are allowed to sell alcohol on Sundays, so I'm asking today that grocery stores be allowed to sell it as well. The citizens of Hammond should be allowed both choices. We recognize the sensitivity of this issue and that there are opinions on both sides with reasonable arguments. I believe that if you pass this new law, the positives far outweigh the negatives. By passing it, you are keeping shoppers in Hammond, and that keeps dollars in Hammond. The issue is not just about purchasing alcohol on Sundays, but about shopping choices on Sundays. Right now, if someone waits until Sunday to shop for their dinners and family events, and they want to purchase alcohol, they're leaving Hammond, they're going somewhere else to do that. And they're not just buying alcohol, they're buying the rest of their groceries there too. By choosing this ordinance, you're choosing to give money to others, by not passing this ordinance, you're choosing to give money to other cities rather than keep it here in Hammond. I've been in the grocery industry for a long time, and I can tell you that across our company, Sunday is either the best, or, either the best day or the second busiest day of the week. And currently Sundays, I can't speak for all the retailers, of course, we don't want to air all of our dirty laundry out here, but Sundays is not one of my better days. And, and I really believe if you pass the ordinance, that that would change, and the tax dollars that we're losing, and the business that we're losing would come back to us in City council permitted alcohol sales at grocery stores on two previous Sundays, that I can remember. When, of course, our beloved Saints played in the Super Bowl, we allowed liquor sales on Sunday, and also when Christmas Eve fell on Sunday, we also were allowed to sell alcohol on that day as well. And for that, I thank you, and I don't know if your results were as good as ours, but by that, but they stand out in my mind, because it made a difference for our Hammond store. The world we live in today is very last minute, as people work long hours, and in some cases, both parents work. Many people in Hammond work on Saturdays, as do I, and I'm sure some of you do as well. This is why the industry-wide Sunday has become such a big shopping day. Next time when you're traveling on Sunday on I-12, look at how many cars are at the Sam's Club in Covington, or in the Denim Springs locations. I can assure you that many of those cars and their taxpaying owners are from Hammond. In other words, when people go to family events and they leave, they leave out the city rather than do some of their purchasing before they leave, they go down to some other locations where they can do it all at one time. And in regard to the Walmart that's currently under construction, opens in Ponce de Tula in the near future, we need to be thinking now of how to keep them coming to Hammond. And I know you guys are all aware of that, that there's a Walmart that's coming to the Ponce de Tula area. I think it's going to affect probably the tax base, and maybe the sales dollars that are currently in Hammond, and to allow them a leg up on Sunday on us, I, I think we need to take a look at that as well. In closing, we would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you about this issue and how it impacts the Albertsons Hammond store, and how it could benefit the Hammond community. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody here that would like to speak against this item? All right, well, do we have any other questions from the council? Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, we'll move right on to item number two. An ordinance for council to declare police confiscated bikes as surplus to be donated to churches and other nonprofit organizations. Mr. Peters. Good afternoon, Mr. Peters.
We are coming again, bringing this for the public discussion, the hearing, and reference to these bikes, so therefore, we're here to see what's to be said, and to connect to that.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. Peters.
Yes, sir.
Unfortunately, not many bikes we give monthly.
I can't answer that. I know now we have a little over 100 at this point, and-
It's about two years' worth.
Yeah, it's about two years' worth, yeah.
If I'm mistaken, for the record, to clarify, there was a list published in the local center, and it, there is a list attached to the agenda, this is highly, is that correct?
Mr. President, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Just for, for a technical perspective, I think the last time we talked about that we already had an ordinance on the books for this process, if I'm not mistaken. So by adopting another ordinance, are we then superseding that ordinance, or we're going to end up with two ordinances on the books with the same basic goal? I just wanted-
No, 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 this, this is specifically related to just those bicycles.
Right.
If the ordinance in place gives the process, arguably, you might have been able to do this by resolution, but by doing it by ordinance doesn't- Yes, sir. No, sir, okay. Okay, I'll give it back. Any other questions? Any other questions or comments from the public?
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive. I appreciate the job, the very awesome job that Mr. Peters has, and how well he does it through auction and getting these surplus things out to the public. About, I don't know, two years ago, there was a need for bicycles, and I, I called the mayor and asked, how do we, how do we get these bicycles in the hands of, in that case, foreign students at the university who could not afford transportation? So he said, well, you have to bid on them. I bid until I ran out of money. The mayor added, doubled the amount that we were going to bid, and every time when we made our last bid, it was raised $1. And we could not get those bicycles for people who needed them in Hammond. So I just wanted to say to you that I really appreciate this move, and that this really is a need in our community, and thank you, Mr. Peters, and thank you, council.
Mr. President, I may just clarify one thing while she's coming up. Those bids were under bid, I mean, under gov.com.
Right.
Those were not my bids. That was through gov.com, so I want to make sure everybody understands.
My name is Jeannie Jones. My address is 306 Alexander Drive in Hammond, and the bikes in question have a real use still for the international students. My husband and I have been for several years just taking old bikes that people threw away and rebuilding them and giving them to international students, but as our international student body grows, the need gets greater and greater, and this year, we approached Pastor Mary Chance about doing more with the bikes, maybe expanding our, our base of bikes to fix, and he was kind enough to contact Mayor Foster, and so this is one of the reasons that this is coming before the, the council tonight. Brought with me a picture of eight kids who just recently came in from Nepal, who are now sitting on bikes, riding them, and I just thought you might like to see, they're very happy, the need is great. This, these are eight. If we have to wait until somebody decides to throw a bike away, they may go for several months without a bike. So I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Good, this is me, 1003 Sunlight, Hammond. What they're saying about these bikes are good, and we keep talking about the international students, I just want to make sure that we don't forget about our businesses, that's all I'd like to say. And we have a lot of kids, these bikes, but I get off, so.
So is it, is it, Mr. President, do we, I noticed the mayor's question on how he will determine where the bikes go, is there some type of a process, Mr. Mayor, that you, that you've used in the past that we can talk to the audience about?
Actually, we do open them up, open up the, the bicycles to nonprofit organizations, to other churches, we've had churches that have come by. I think in terms of the international students, there's not that many of them, I think there may be 20 of them. When Pastor Chance did approach us, I think he'll confirm that the one thing that we wanted to make sure was that when we did do this bicycle distribution, that it was done on a fair and equitable basis, that if we have a distribution point, it would be from some local position, such as Zemurray Park, or something like that. So we, we will take the requests as they come, and I know, and Chris is absolutely right, that we have a, a big demand around Christmas time, and so we make sure that the distribution is fair and equitable.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
There, Chance, 103 North Pine Street here in Hammond. I'm pastor, first presiding church, and we're one of the ones that asked for this ordinance. And to address the gentleman's concerns, really for us, it's a two-pronged thing. We've got a lot of adult bikes there, and those are our focus, with any adult bikes that we might gain access to here, is with international students, where I think the numbers are a little higher, I think it's over 100 now, international students, but also children. Part of the program that Jeannie and Harvey have been doing on their own for many years is fixing up bikes and donating them to the children in their neighborhood, which they require them to come and learn how to repair those bicycles themselves. So it, it's not just a free bicycle, it's also some life skills, it's also some mentoring as they come and spend time there in their garage, and so our, our hope is that this isn't just transportation, that this is an opportunity to change the lives of those who will receive these.
And I believe that young children tend to Rosewood area.
Yeah, and they live in the Rosewood area.
Mr. President, Pastor Chance had a meeting over at his church, we attended the meeting, and was actually brought out by Daniel Edwards, the sheriff, and he has over 2,000 bicycles, that they had never distributed bicycles, and I believe he indicated that he's going to try to see whether or not he can surplus some of those bicycles as well.
We're going there next.
We should.
That's where you should go first. Looks like a Walmart of bikes, huh?
Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move right into our regular meeting for September 3rd, 2013. Roll call please.
Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Jason Hood.
Here.
Bobby Martin.
Yeah.
Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Mike Williams.
Here.
Pastor Chance, the dealey is from the choir, please.
O Lord, we give you thanks for this day, that you have given us, for blessings, that you have showered down upon us, as you have showered rain down upon us today as well, to cool the earth and to quench our thirst. We pray for the institutions of government, especially for the city of Hammond, for all those that serve, that they might do so wisely and justly, that all of our decisions indeed might bring about greater righteousness, that we'll make this the community where we all want to live.
Amen. Councilman Martin, please. Especially with those who are the children of the United States of America, and to their values, for which they stand, one nation, one God, and visible, the truth is in justice for all. Do the other council reports? Okay, Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. We did get a sales tax collection report, the total collections, and I did not send this out to the council, was 1,336,000. It was just slightly above last year, but for the 30th straight month, other than the Isaac month, we did have an increase in our sales tax collections. Thank you to the citizens for shopping in Hammond. Do want to report that the Natchez Street Bridge and Councilman Martin's district appears to be somewhat of a challenge for the city, but we had a meeting this morning concerning the bridge, and we got some good news, that the parish is going to help us repair this bridge. Their bridge construction crew is not able to start until next, next Monday, but starting next Monday, you'll see crews, councilmen, out there working on the Natchez Street Bridge. What we'll be doing is leaving the bridge intact, but actually working on the approaches, the bridge approaches. And the method of repair that Chuck Spangler and Nace Carafola from the parish have come up with, working very closely with Buddy Ridgell of the city of Hammond, is that we'll actually be doing a backfill into the bridge, we'll cut out a section of the bridge, backfill it, and then put the seat back on the bridge. So instead of spending about $100,000, it looks like we're going to be spending $8,000 to $10,000. So that's good news for the city. Also, I want to report that the, that Hammond youth can now come take a trip with us around the world, that the recreation department on Saturday, September 21st, from 10:00 to 12:00, is offering an event to the children, that they can come and learn about different cultures, learn how to speak a variety of languages, partake in unique crafts, as well as delicious native cuisine, and that's on Saturday, September 21st, at the Michael J. Kenny Center from 10:00 to 12:00. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do you have any new businesses in the audience that would like to be drafted in? Okay, approval of minutes. Go to the board.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, do you know old resolutions, new resolutions? Number one, a resolution authorizing 2013 Holy Ghost Parish Fair to be held on October 25th, 26th, and 27th of 2013. Boundaries set for the fair are Magnolia Street from West Colorado to the railroad and Northwest Railroad Avenue from West Colorado to the railroad track. Jennifer O'Neil.
Hi, Jennifer O'Neil, 111 Sheldon Place. Yes, we're asking for your permission to have the Holy Ghost Parish Fair, if you change the date to October for this year and for moving forward, so the dates we have at both are October 25th, 26th, and 27th.
Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution authorizing the Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to sell alcohol on Friday, October 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I know this is always asked, but we do have a system in place where attendees must visit the hospitality booth to, you know, to present their ID, and they have a bracelet of their, of their age that they can buy alcohol.
Any questions? Second.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution authorizing the Holy Ghost Parish Fair Committee to receive the waiver of the open container law on Friday, October 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., Saturday, October 26th, from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I don't think I can say much.
Motion. Second.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Number one, before, final adoption ordinance, before I read this, would anybody come in that would like to speak against this item to amend the blue law? Number one, final adoption of an ordinance to amend the city code of ordinance, is chapter five, article one, section 5.2, to provide exceptions to Sunday openings for retail establishments selling alcohol. Motion to approve. Second. Vote, please.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
No.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Item two, final adoption of an ordinance for council to declare police confiscated bikes as surplus to be donated to churches and other nonprofit organizations. Someone. Second.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Mike Williams. Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Okay, introduction of ordinance and set in public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance for the council to declare surplus items available and to be sold to govdeals.com. There is a list attached to the agenda, which I will not read. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 17th, 2013.
Number two, an introduction of an ordinance authorizing the issuance of not exceeding $5 million sewer revenue bonds, series 2013, of the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Mayor Foster.
This is the next step, if you'll recall, Grant Schluter from Foley Udell was here at the last meeting indicating that this would be brought up for introduction at this meeting. that this would be brought up for introduction at this meeting. Mr. Schluter or one of the other members of the Foley-Udel team will be in the next meeting to explain it all. I do want to also indicate to the, to the council and to the public that we have completed all of the smoke testing on this project. Chuck has already come out with the areas that will be approved, so if any council member or any of the public wants to see their particular areas, we do have those maps in my office.
Motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for September 17, 2013.
On this item, uh-
Item number three.
Item three.
Yes, sir. Oh, the introduction of ordinance.
To introduce this, I'll go first.
So, so what we'll do is, we'll leave this off of introduction today. He, he is asking to not introduce this today, to introduce it at the next meeting.
Okay. Is motion to table, man? Motion to table. Second.
Johnny, Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to table approved.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye.